We will be using the raise hand function. We will take answers from the first five people to raise their hands. There will be no time for rebuttals. The questions have been developed by the League of Women Voters Howard County and our partners ACS, PTAC, and the Horizon Foundation. Candidates may answer the same question or may be asked different questions.
Those come up later.
I'm sorry?
Okay. That's mine. You want yours?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you know what it is?
Yeah.
The circuit three?
Yes, I keep asking this. No. Okay. Now hopefully that took care of that. It's strange. Okay. Anyway, I apologize. Where was I? Okay. Refrain from talking out of turn or talking over the speaker or the moderator. There will be a timekeeper who will let you know when you have 30 seconds left and when your time is up. A pink card will mean 30 seconds left and time, she's just going to say time, will mean that you're done. The forum will run a total of two hours. So I'm going to start with the candidates. All right. From District One and alphabetically Christina Delmon Small. Hopefully you are unmuted. You've got two minutes as an opening statement.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters, the Association of Community Services of Howard County, the PTA Council of Howard County, and the Horizon Foundation for holding this forum. I'm Christina Delmonte Small and I'm running for reelection in District One. I've been a public education advocate for over 11 years and started by getting involved in the PTA at my child's school. I then served on the PTA Council of Howard County, including three years as the president. I've served on the Maryland PTA Board of Directors. I was a member of multiple operating budget review committees. And when the school system eliminated the committee, I established and co-chaired a citizens' operating budget review committee with the then-president of the teachers' union. As a Board of Education member, I've served on the Legislative Committee. I'm currently Chair of the Audit Committee. And I was appointed to the County Executive Spending Affordability Advisory Committee by both County Executive Ball and Kittelman. I'm running again because there's still more work to be done. We still have opportunity and achievement gaps standing in the way of student success. Our schools and our classrooms must be places where students and educators are and feel welcome.
It's our, it's our, it's a different code.
I ran four years ago to change a culture where accountability, transparency, and oversight were discouraged. I want to continue to work with my colleagues and the community to narrow these gaps, make decisions that will benefit all students, sustain our school system for the students of today as well as tomorrow, and to reinforce a culture of accountability, transparency, and oversight. The system has to do a better job of linking dollars to student outcomes and also listening to the community and working with them. Thank you again for putting on the forum.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Next candidate is Matthew Moliet, also from District One. You have two minutes.
Hi. Good afternoon. I am Matthew Moliet from District One. I am here today as a candidate for Board of Education because I care. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for their impressive 100 years of nonpartisan grassroots support for our democracy. Thank you for your important work of making candidates available to all of our communities. Communicating with all communities is critical. I care about defending the rights and education of all students. The utter devastation
Join the meeting.
of 200,000 deaths of our countrymen loom heavy over today's forum. As the pandemic has so shaped our current schooling. I care about the difficulties parents face. I am a working-from-home father of three HCPSS students, hopefully none of which that joined this forum. Back in July, back before the pandemic claimed an additional 70,000 American lives, our Board of Education had to decide how today's schooling would occur. One member, a candidate speaking today, had sided with the National Administration against our educators. I would care about and would have prioritized the human, the health and safety of our educators, staff, and students. Now, with our students back to school remotely, I have heard about the security issues with Google Meet classes. I care about computer security. Long ago, I earned my computer's merit badge while becoming an Eagle Scout. After years of computer network defense for the DOD, I earned my Masters in Cybersecurity. Our board needs to be able to ask the right questions about our vital digital infrastructure. I have the background and experience to ask those questions. Thank you for this forum. Let's have a good day.
Bye. Okay. And we go now to District Two. And there's only one person in District Two right now, and that is Antonia Watts. Thank you very much. And you've got two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Antonia Barkley Watts. My pronouns are she, her, hers. I'm running for Board of Education in District Two because it is urgent that we develop a system where every child has access to an education that fits their needs. There is an opportunity gap in our community and it is important that we focus on closing it to achieve better outcomes for our children, especially for the traditionally underserved like my boys. I started my career as an engineer in crash and safety testing where I analyzed data and derived cost-effective yet innovative solutions based on that data. I was pretty good at my job, yet I most enjoy explaining my findings to my colleagues. In short, I relish teaching. During the same time, I was running a tutoring program for the NAACP and I loved it. I loved it so much that I left my job as an engineer, got a Masters in Education, and became a classroom teacher. I've taught math and engineering at the middle school, high school, and collegiate level. With one child in public school and another close behind, I understand the challenges and needs of our children and our educators. Currently, I volunteer on the Board of Trustees for the Howard County Library System. In this role, I am responsible for working with my colleagues to develop policies that relate to the management of the library and of its CEO. And finally, I'm a small business owner. As such, I am comfortable wearing many hats at the same time. During the past 10 years in education, I have realized the importance of having an educator involved in the development of the policies that impact our children. So as a member of the Board of Education, I will combine my analytical engineering skills, my board experience, with my understanding of the classroom to amplify the voices of those not often represented in the conversation. Thank you so much for having me today.
Okay. Thank you very much, Antonia. Can everybody see Ellen Flynn Giles' screen? Who are the candidates?
Okay.
Okay. I just want to make sure you can all see that because the pink card is going to mean 30 seconds. And then she'll, when you're done, she'll say time if you go, if your ghost is still going. So I just want to make sure everybody's got that. Okay. Now we move on to District Three, Jolene Mosley.
Hi, I'm Jolene and I'm running for Board of Education in District Three. I've lived in Howard County my entire adult life. I started off here as a college student and volunteered at the fire department. I, and through this experience of my adult life and as a Howard County resident, I have met many wonderful community members and I enjoy volunteer work and supporting the school system. Thank you for hosting us today. I'm looking forward to this conversation. I would like to build relationships with our community members. And this is an avenue that we can do that. I have been helping the school system this past year. I was, well, I have four children in the school system. My oldest is a senior and my youngest is a preschooler. We have been HCPSS family for 14 years and I have around 14 more years to go. So I'll be around a while. My children attend Oakland Mills Middle School, Oakland Mills High School, and we love our school communities. I was the Vice Chair for the Community Advisory Council, which is a liaison between the school board and the community at large this past year. And I also serve on the HCPSS Operating Budget Review Committee. In my professional life, I'm a full-time remote data scientist with a background in many areas of data science in both the public and private space. I also, since I am a remote employee, I do understand the pain points that can happen with a virtual environment. My opponent, Tom, he's thrown his full support behind me. And we hope to work with United District in supporting our school system. Despite his name still being on the ballot, um, he is supporting me. So I do encourage you to get out there and vote. My ballot came in the mail yesterday. I'm pretty excited about that. So thank you so much for having us and I look forward to meeting the community.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. We go from three to four and it looks like Julie alphabetically, Hotop, goes first.
Great. Thank you for inviting me today. I am a professor and scientist in microbiology and genomics. I have dedicated my life to education and science. It is my profession. I live in Columbia with my husband and two sons that attend Bryant Woods Elementary School and Wild Lake Middle School. I am a writing candidate. So if you like what you hear from me, you have to write in H O T O P P. I promise to engage in active listening and dialogue and engage with my constituents. I believe we need to ensure the best education for students that is safe. We need to mend the divide. We need to start schools later. We need to ensure the diversity of our teachers matches that of our students. I want transparency and accountability in our public school system. I promise to be engaged and communicate with all residents. I'm a critical thinker as well as a data analyst. I'm an educator and I will use that knowledge to inform decisions on education. I'm a microbiologist and I will use my knowledge in that area to inform decisions on education during the time of COVID. I am seeking a different tone and a different way forward in HCPSS. And again, I am a writing candidate. So if you like the things you hear me say, you have to write me in and it's H O T O P P.
Thank you very much. Our next person is Jen Mallow. And Jen, you have two minutes.
Hi. Thank you for hosting us. I really want to thank the League of Women Voters for coming out into our schools and helping register new voters. And for the Horizon Foundation, for all your work around health and mental health and supports with the school system. And PTAC for your commitment to our PTAs and our students in Howard County and the Association of Community Service for all the work you do for our students and staff. You are true partners in education. I moved to the county 30 years ago, so all of my adult life has been spent in the county. And 25 years of that has been in education, of which 20 has been in public education. I've been on the board for about a year and a half, a little bit more at this point, and I'm seeking reelection in District Four. When I moved to the county to work for the federal government, I had no idea how long, how my involvement in the community would grow. And in fact, when I left the federal government to stay home with my family, I found that I couldn't stay at home for very long. So I began by starting a nonprofit. I ran a preschool. I have just volunteered so many hours in time in schools. Everything from a classroom volunteer to a PTA president, running a science fair, bringing in a Newberry Award-winning writer, Hispanic author, to talk with our kids and help them with their writing. I served, I'm sorry? Okay. So I'm getting the pink card and it was unclear.
That's 30 seconds. That's 30 seconds, Jen.
Thank you. So, you know, I, I've been deeply involved in policy committees. I was Chair of the Community Advisory Council for two years. I am the only sitting board member who has actually served on a policy committee, which is one of the key components of the school board, one of the key jobs. And it's really critical that we have someone who has the experience and knowledge to lead our system with the values that I hold.
Time. Okay. Thank you very much, Jen Mallow. Our next candidate is Susan Palmer. And you have two minutes.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Susan Palmer and I'm also running in District Four. I am a lifelong Howard County resident, a graduate of the Howard County Public School System, and I currently have two children enrolled in Howard County Public Schools. I work here as well. I'm an executive in a large research and development organization. And I have over 20 years of organizational leadership experience, six years at the executive level overseeing hundreds of staff and millions of dollars. I'm running for the Board of Education because I see a school system in crisis. Even before COVID, we were heading in the wrong direction, cutting educators, increasing class sizes. And I believe that it's time for a change. We need to prioritize the education of all students, focus on meaningful changes that will enable them to be successful. Somebody already mentioned the growing opportunity gap. And I think we need real solutions to close that gap. We don't need to continue talking about it. We need real leadership that can implement change and align resources toward the most critical problems. So as I mentioned, I have experience in leading large organizations. My organization is over $1 billion, similar, a little bit bigger actually than the school system. And I think what we need on the board is that experience that understands how to manage a large, complex organization, how to identify strategic priorities, how to use data to make informed decisions, and again, how to align resources accordingly. I also have significant experience in building alliances across organizations, which I think is critical. And I am 100% focused on making decisions that are in the best interest of Howard County students, families, and educators. So thank you very much and I look forward to the questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. We go to District Five. And Yunlu, you're first up. Two minutes, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. I really appreciate this opportunity to meet with all of you. We're here today because we all value education and we care deeply about our children and our communities. I'm Dr. Yunlu, running for Board of Education in District Five. I'm a first-generation immigrant. I arrived in the United States as a graduate student with only two sealed cases. I received my PhD in biostatistics from Johns Hopkins University. Now I work as a statistician for Federal Public Health Agency in Montgomery County. My family decided to move to Howard County eight years ago because of the diverse community and excellent school system. I have two children in Howard County Public School System. Howard County is our new home. I came from a family of educators and I have been teaching math competition classes at Howard County Chinese School. I believe public education should put our children first. We need to use common sense and find innovative solutions to the challenges HCPSS is facing now, especially during this COVID-19 pandemic. We need to work on a solid plan to provide in-person instruction to students in need, improve virtual learning, bring sports back to schools, and support student mental health. Budget is the present issue in HCPSS. I'm familiar with HCPSS budget by serving on the BOE Operating Budget Review Committee. And I have procurement experience at the Federal Acquisition Contracting Officers' representing. Want to make sure that school system spend taxpayers' money wisely to improve education. I have experience and a skill side to bring evidence-based decision-making to BOE. Most importantly, I care deeply about our children, our community, and education. Thank you.
Thank you, Yun. Okay. Cindy Valencourt, you're up. Two minutes, please.
She's muted.
Yeah, I know. I'm trying to unmute her. Oh, wait a minute. There we go. Wait, hold on. She was unmuted a second ago. This button is not working. Cindy, can you try to unmute yourself? See if it'll work. There you go. Okay. You're up.
And I did not start. Now you're going.
Now you're good.
Thank you. Hi. My name is Cindy Valencourt. I, my family and I moved to Howard County in 2000. And one of our children went through school K through 12 in Howard County. One of our children did four through eight in Howard County Public Schools and then graduated at, from Glen El Country School. The major reason that we sent her to private school was because of the, what I consider to be the terribly unhealthy start times of 7:10 at the time, 7:15, 7:20 now. I'm a best fit-for-your-kid kind of parent. And what, when we moved here, we had the option of moving to many cities across the country and looked very closely for a school that would be able to accommodate my son who had special needs and my daughter who was a high-achieving student. And we zeroed in on Howard County because it did both things well. When I was working on getting my son his, the services he needed, I would, I began to get a lot of questions from other parents. How did you get your son this? How did you get your son that? And I began advocating for parents for special education issues and quickly learned that not everyone was having the experience in the Howard County Public School System that we were or that they needed. I ran for board in 2010 and I recently saw one of my opening statements and it was heartbreaking to note that some, the same issues that were of concern then continue to be concerned or have concern. I believe that every child deserves an, essentially an IEP, an Individualized Education Plan. We need to address the specific issues that each child has. And during the course of this forum, I hope that I'll be able to elaborate more on how I would approach doing that. Thank you all for having us.
Thank you. Okay. Now I am going to hand it over to our moderators, Joan and Brent. And they will be asking the questions. Thank you very much.
Hello, Joan. I believe you're first up and
I am. I was just
Two right behind you.
Yes, I was just unmuted. Thank you. First, I'd like to command all of you for your commitment to the community, to our school system. You're to be applauded for that. I will be taking your questions in the order in which I see your hands raised. So if I get it slightly off, please forgive me. I'm trying to monitor on the side. Our first question is, in the 2011-2012 school year, the number of suspensions relative to the number of students was five times higher for black students than for white students. In the 2018-19 school year, that figure had risen to six times. How would you go about learning what is driving this disparity and what would you do to solve the problem? And Cynthia, can you see if hands are raised?
Yes, I saw Jen went first. Suzanne went second.
Okay. Let's start with Jen then. Jen Mallow.
Thank you. So first things first, when we are looking at suspension data, we know that there are horrible disparate outcomes. And in particular, we have found that black and brown children, boys, and special ed students tend to be targeted more than any other student. And so what we need to do is first you look at the data and then you try to look at the root causes. And so last week, on Thursday, we passed Howard County's first-ever equity policy. And key in this policy were accountability measures that we put in place at the, with, in conjunction with the school system, with the consensus of the entire Board of Education being unanimous in our support that we want to examine the data, the root causes, and then appropriate funds to put programmatic solutions into place. It has to be measured before it can be improved. And then you have to have this continuous cycle of improvement. And we need to let this policy work. It's magic is what I'm going to say. Not that it'll be magic, but we are going to take those actionable steps based on a policy that we worked really hard and worked diligently with the community to execute.
Thank you. Um, Susan Palmer, would you like to address this question?
She's mute.
Cynthia, I think you will need to unmute her.
All right. There we go. It wasn't letting me unmute. Yes. Thank you very much. So I think having policies is certainly one step. But across the public school system, we have many, many policies that we don't enforce. So I think that in addition to having the right policies and collecting data, we need to provide training. We have the disproportionate suspensions and discipline across the different student populations that you mentioned. And I think we need to focus on training our educators. I think another aspect of this is ensuring that our, our teachers and our educators are representative of our student demographics. So when we look at the, the fraction of minority students across Howard County Public School System, it's out of line with the, the proportion of educators that we have of those same backgrounds. So I think we need to focus also on hiring more minority educators, on providing appropriate training for our educators, and ensuring that we have better enforcement of the policies that we have, not just create additional ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Delmonte Small, I believe your hand went up next.
Thank you. Yes. We can't manage what we don't measure. We're doing a better job, but we still have a long way to go to have an understanding of what exactly is going on in our classrooms. We need to be able to get the data and we need to be able to analyze it. But the other piece of that is data is great, but what are we going to do to reinforce what we're seeing that needs to be changed? And one thing definitely is training. However, there also, we have to do a better job. For example, what we've done is we've had training that's required by our teachers for them to take it, but we never tracked whether or not they were taking the training, which is a huge problem. Because if we're training teachers to implement policy and to take actions in a certain way and we don't track whether or not they took the training, how do we even know that the training is working? It is so important that we have a checks and balance within the school system when it comes to the training and the reinforcing of what we're finding. There were schools who do better than other schools. We have to look at what are they doing that's different? And then we have to apply it across the system. We have to learn from ourselves, but we also have to look outside of Howard County and also look outside of Maryland and see how other school systems are dealing with these issues. Because we have to look again. These are our students. And when we have them in our, in our schools and our classrooms, we're responsible to provide them an education and provide an environment where they are going to be able to be ready to educate, to be educated.
Thank you. And just as a reminder to the audience, the question that we are addressing here is the disparity in suspensions between black students and white, which has risen to six times the number of suspensions for black students as for white. And we're asking the candidates how they would address this problem. Matthew Moliet, could you address this issue?
Yes. Oh. The disparities in discipline, suspensions, and arrests in our schools was a driving factor that increased my involvement with the school and my path to running here today. And as was noted by Ms. Mallow, the disparities exist. They're present and we need to continue tracking and addressing those. In addition to tracking that what is happening, we need to look at where it's happening to be able to identify whether that loops into the causes. Specifically, our high school arrest data shows significant disparities on racial lines across the buildings. But what we see is not just that more students are arrested in our schools from our black population at schools that have a higher population of black students, but that black students are more likely to be arrested at those schools, indicating that it's not just an issue of differences in the population, but there's underlying differences in how the individual schools approach discipline, suspension, and arrest patterns and strategies based upon our schools. And that data is already existing and accurate and we need to address it.
Thank you. Yunlu, would you like to address this question?
Sure. Thank you. Well, I'm a statistician and I, my everyday work is to look at real-world data and see how can we draw conclusions. So from a statistician point of view, first, voice So from a dissertation point of view, first, voice data, their associations, association is not causation. So we're having to make sure we dive deeper into the data to see what is the root cause. Because ultimately, we want to help students, want to decrease the suspension rate, we want to help the student grow. So let's see what can help them. So the first point I want to bring up is data is important. Complete data and accurate and actual data. So here I'm here about black versus white, but in reality, they are more racist. They are Asians, they're Hispanics. So first, I will suggest HCPSS also present data from Hispanics and Asians and also more racial groups. So we can have a big picture. Second, we'll look at what are unmarried contributors? Because in real world data, bias is a very important issue. So when we see this difference by race, we have to think about first, will we control for some conditions? For example, the type of behavior that triggered suspension? Can we control for that? Second, are there any other factors we need to consider? And the third fact I want to mention is I heard that we're talking about 2011 and 12 and also 2017, 18. So basically now in the same school, there are two cohort of students coming follow the same student longitudinally to see whether it's any improvement. Because with the change Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Julie Hodtop, would you like to speak to what may be driving this disparity in suspension rates and how you would go about solving it?
Yes, thank you. I would love to. I think, you know, there's, there's multiple things here. I have had a longstanding concern about boys in our education system. And so, you know, you you mentioned the race issue. Many people have mentioned special education, but I don't think enough attention has paid been paid to gender. And there's a lot of research that's been done about how boys are being left behind in our education system. And, you know, some of that's, you know, going to happen as women become more equal. But we need to make sure that they know that they are valued. And we need to make sure that they have the same opportunities that the girls do. And in my experiences, that isn't always happening. As I watch board meetings, I often find that there's a reluctance to gather the data. It's almost as if gathering the data makes us aware of a problem and that becomes a liability. And by that I mean a legal liability. And so that really concerns me because I do think that we need better data. We need to have interventions that we introduce, but we need to collect good data before and after to know if that intervention is working. You know, in addition to just training teachers and and principals, which is often mentioned, we also just need activities for the boys. So I was talking to a local middle school teacher recently, you know, about programs like Boys on the Run, who which are there to really encourage the development of these boys.
Hi. Cindy Valencourt, would you like to address the racial disparity in suspensions?
I'm unmuted, okay. That, you know, collecting data is is fine and it's it's important and there needs to be before and after evaluation of programs. But I just feel like I need a perpetual facepalm because we have been having, we've been saying the same thing for 20 years that I've been here, 10, in the last 10, eight of them on the board, that we know this is happening. And we can't postpone doing things that will help fix it, waiting for additional collections of data. When my son was in high school, we fought tooth and nail to keep his IEP in place, largely because we knew that that afforded him some degree of protection against disciplinary measures in the event that his disability caused him to act out or be loud or, you know, get up and leave our classroom or something like that. The, we know that this is happening. The restorative justice programs that are being put into the school system largely funded by a grant from the teachers' union is a really good first step. You can't have you can't count on a kid's relationships to help keep them on the straight and narrow if they don't have relationships. And it doesn't surprise me a bit that the that the situation has gotten worse since 2012 because we have continued to to back off on counselors and staffing. And when you
Thank you. Jolene Mosley, would you like to address this issue? Cynthia, I believe you may need to unmute Jolene. That's okay.
I would like one quick clarification. I thought that we were allowing five candidates to answer each question. Are we
I'm sorry.
We've all done it now.
Okay.
So do you want me to answer the question or are we
You'd like me to move on?
I'd like to answer the question if you don't mind.
Okay.
Because I think I have something different than what others have alluded to. We know that these things are happening. We know that we have been policing our children differently. We know that we have been putting this role of who is doing suspensions and things like that to into different hands at times. And I think something that we missed when we having this conversation here is that we're not talking about the school climate in which these kids and these families are 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 existing in, right? We need to allow our schools to build this school climate where inclusion and tolerance is what the bottom line is. We shouldn't be approaching this as we think boys are the misbehavior issue, so we're going to have more boy problems. We're not going to, you know, programs, we're not going to need to approach it like that. We need to make it so that the school climate is where students and educators feel welcome, safe, boundaries that students face are addressed in lessons so that everyone can have educational progress. Because if a student wants to be at school, they're going to want to be there, they're going to feel included, their absenteeism is going to go down, their families are going to be able to participate more, and the whole vision of the school climate is going to be changed and be a better environment for everyone. And then we can work on more restorative justice and doing conversations like that so that we can have wellness and we can have a lot of more better well-being in our schools. So that's all I wanted to add to that conversation.
Thank you. And Brent, I'm going to turn it over to you for the second
Can I answer too, since everybody else kind of got in there? Thank you. So one of the things that I wanted to one of the things I wanted to add also is, and Julie kind of said it's that we're not, this this data is unsurprising. And to to say that we want to study it more and get more data and and do more things, we've done that, we've been there. Nothing has changed, nothing has evolved. We actually know for a fact that it's not just the boys actually that have the problem, black girls are on the rise, right? So we're picking out our our black girls as well that, you know, for for things that are attitude problems, things that are completely subjective. We are, we are targeting certain, certain children of usually black children and black girls specifically. So I don't think there's a, there's a need to really study the data. We have to bring in, you know, teachers that, you know, we talked about the support teachers that look like the kids that they're teaching so that they understand that, you know, if I, if me, for example, if I raise my voice, I'm not just an angry black woman, that I just maybe I'm passionate about the topic, right? So I think that we, we really have to bring in our educators and develop this environment that Jolene was talking about that is inclusive, that is responsive and that is respectful for our students.
Thank you. And now I will turn it over to Brent.
Okay, we were muted there. In the spirit of keeping things going by the rules of our hosts, I'm going to return back to the first five candidates. So please keep your hands next to that button or to raise your hand. And I am also going to say we can PTA contributed two questions out of the list here. Some of them sound very similar that I will be asking. So please listen for the nuances of what I'm saying because you'll hear this question again with slightly different criteria. So the question I'm going to lead with is, considering our growing percentage of students living in poverty, how specifically can Howard County Public School System best address the serious learning gap these students will face during an extended period of distance learning? To the board. Okay.
So Julie's go, okay, do you have it, Brent?
Yes, and it appears that the participants field sorts by the order selected. And if that's inaccurate, I apologize to our candidates, but that is the order I'll go in. So the first person I'm going to ask is Ms. Palmer.
Thank you very much. So I think the two keys that I I took away from that are students living in poverty and the impact of distance learning. So first, addressing the issue of the the gaps that we have and particularly how we help our students living in poverty. One of the things that I have been talking about is having us revisit the way we approach Title I allocation across HCPSS. So we currently use a school-wide model where we take the funds that are provided on the basis of those children who who need the funds most, and we spread it out across the school. And I understand why we do that. I think it's easier to administer that way and it it's a simpler way to do it. But I think it also is of detrimental effect to those children who are living in poverty for whom that money is meant to support. And so that's one of the things that I would want us to revisit on the Board of Education is the way we allocate our funds and move toward a targeted model that would provide those funds to the children who need them most. And as far as the impacts of distance learning, I mean, obviously, that is just exacerbating and already challenging situation. So coupled with directing the resources toward the children who need it most, I would be advocating right now if I was on the Board of Ed to get those children back in school in a safe way in small classes. But rather than just having children there still participating virtually, I would want us working on a plan for in-person learning for those children. Now, thank you.
And for our host, if you wouldn't mind just leaving me unmuted for for the rest of this to save a little time. So our candidates know our next one speaker or answer for the question is Dr. Hotop, followed by Ms. Watts, followed by Ms. Lu, followed by Ms. Mallow. And Ms. Hotop?
Thank you. So I think, you know, really the most important thing is to develop a good, safe plan to get the kids back in the schools. In some ways, I think it's unfortunate they're not in the schools right now. The levels are the lowest that they're going to be probably for a while. You know, I'm speaking about, I'm speaking from from the perspective of someone who works in microbiology. Respiratory diseases peak in the wintertime. You know, the school system made the decision to go back in, you know, to possibly go back in January, February, that's when flu is the highest, that's when colds are the highest, that's going to be the hardest time to go back. So it's unfortunate they're not in school now. Parents need options, like I'm not sure I'd send my kid back if I even had the option because I have higher risks. But for many families, they don't have an option to keep their kids at home. They're already going in and they should be getting in-person education. And this is a conversation that should be going on right now. It shouldn't wait until the last minute to get input. It should have been going on over the summer. It should have been going on continuously. But in particular, poor children, which I was, I grew up in poverty. You know, you can't really, I think you can't really treat them different. You need to have programs that raise all children up in a way that also benefits those children. So for instance, I really support the community eligibility provision. The other thing I strongly support is having ways that other parents can help volunteer to help children who might need help. Right now, particularly after redistricting, many of us are finding it really hard in our new schools to make those connections.
Ms. Watts?
Okay, I guess this is kind of two separate sides of the same point. So as far as just as poverty is concerned, I think one of the things even before the pandemic that we need to start focusing on children even before kindergarten. So those early childhood education programs head start. I would love to see a universal pre-K program in in our county and our state because we really need to pick the kids up before they before they enter kindergarten where a lot of teachers will tell you they're already behind. And so it's really hard to close those gaps as you're, as you're, as children are struggling with other things that come with just being not able to put enough food on the table for them. As far as distance learning is concerned, I would like to see the smaller group, even if they're, even if small groups are not going in person yet, I'd love to have seen those small groups in the virtual setting start sooner. So they're just kind of, just kind of getting underway right now. And I would love to see that from from day one. We already know our students that we're going to struggle in this environment. We already have them identified in a, in a way that we we know who they are. So I would have loved to see those those children pulled pulled out for a small group already as opposed to waiting for the future.
Thank you. And Ms. Lu, you're next.
Thank you. And so I really think that in-person, small group instruction will be very effective. So we need to make sure that they can return back to school safely. And right now I know that HCPSS has been happy use for childcare. And then I think that our school system need to develop a plan to bring those keys back to school, provide in-person teaching. If childcare is safe enough, then we must be able to fund a mixer to bring students No, no. Second, another question I want to, another issue I see from this is because of the four by four model, then some students they won't have, for example, mathematics for a long time. If we count last March, if they don't have math until the second semester, actually there's a long gap. And there is a book outlier actually explained that during long summer break, it actually hurts during in poverty more. So want to make sure how to reteach them quickly, how to bring them back. It's very important because they don't have extra resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lu, and we'll conclude with Ms. Mallow. And if the other candidates wouldn't mind lowering their hands, we had given our opportunity with Joan directly afterward. Ms. Mallow?
Thank you. So a couple of things that I want to address. One, Ms. Barclay Watts is absolutely right. We need universal pre-K. And how are we going to be able to afford it? We need to change the maintenance of effort calculation that doesn't include pre-K. We need our county and our state to be funding it. We need a one-to-one technology ratio for our students right now. It's the only way to survive distance learning for our students who don't have the means to provide for themselves. As well, as well, the Title I allocation, it's only $5 million. Right now, when you spend $5 million across 13 schools at the elementary level where it's concentrated, where we know we can make the biggest difference, that is the most important thing. Otherwise, you're dispersing your resources in a way that cannot have economies of scale and affect the greatest number of children. Additionally, we've been able to add at Swan Field where my student, where my own kids went to the community eligibility provision, which means we're providing free meals to everyone in the school, breakfast and lunch. Those are important and critical things. A child who's not eating is not learning. And a child who isn't receiving those additional wraparound supports needs them. And we have them available at those Title I schools. We have them through differentiated instruction and we need to continue that. When I do work When I do work with blessings in a backpack with my program, we are making sure that kids get food for the weekends when they're not in school. And we're working hand in hand with.
Thank you, Ms. Mallow. We'll be passing it over to Joan for the next round of questions here.
Thank you. We're now going to turn to mental health issues. Would you support expanding the current 30 school mental health counseling programs to all 75 schools and Head Start centers? This program provides a variety of mental health and emotional well-being supports to students, including access to one-on-one counseling during school hours for students who need it. Christina Delmont Small, I see your hand. Would you like to be the first to address this question?
Yes, thank you. I think that would be fabulous if we can do that. The challenge we have is that the school system, under the current funding and the available funds that we receive from the county, we would not be able to do that on our own. I want to make sure that the school system, that we don't set ourselves up where we have to make a decision between education versus mental health for, mental health supports for our students. And the best way for us to be able to provide all of that is for us to continue and work and build on our relationships with outside partners. The Horizon Foundation is a fabulous example of this. They have partnered with the school system so that we can have more mental health supports at our schools. I think we have to work with them. We have to continue to look at grants. We have to continue to look with other partners. Because, keep in mind, mental health is very, very important. And we want to make sure we have the best people who are providing those services to our students. We are an education entity, but we need, but we do realize that this is an area where our students need help. So what we need to do is make sure that we partner both with nonprofit and other government entities so that we can work together and help our students and their families be at a point where they can be happy and healthy and be ready for education.
Thank you. Matthew Moliat?
Okay, now I'm unmuted. Yes, I do support it. As Mrs. Delmont Small mentioned there, she's right that we have to be able to address the funding of it. Currently, there is a conversation going on in the community regarding the, the deployment of police officers as part-time, uncredentialed advisors and counselors in our schools. That is money being provided by the county to the police department for a role that is occurring within our school. We could go back to the county and have those funds diverted to funding full-time, credentialed professional counselors to add that additional staffing to our school system to provide counseling and mental health support. Additionally, the state legislature recently, well, this past spring, had passed the Blueprint for Maryland's Future to address the way that we fund our schools, to address our funding calculations and formulas, as Ms. Mallow had mentioned in the last question. That was vetoed by the governor. We need to partner with and pressure our state delegation to see that veto overturned so that the state funding can better match the needs that our students have. Thank you.
Thank you. Jolene Mosley?
Thank you. One of the things that this conversation has reminded me of was we had a presentation at CAC, which is a Community Advisory Council, where members of the community meet and have presentations from HCPSS. In one of those meetings, we learned about the program where they've included these mental health supports in some of the schools, and it is also supported by grants and by sometimes medical insurance, billing child's medical insurance. I think that these conversations with the community, they're letting them know that these support systems exist is really good, and expanding it on to see if we can manage that with some medical insurance support would be great for funding. The additional things that I think about are more outreach across our students. And this could include workshops and assemblies and things like that, that educate students and perhaps they're adults as well about mental health supports and maybe some more information on, you know, different, different areas that you might struggle with mental health or where to get the supports and things like that so that we can arm our children with tools in their toolbox for when they do have problems, that they know where to go and that there is places that they can go and people to talk to.
Thank you. And finally, Cindy Valencourt, would you support expanding the 30 mental health counseling programs to all 75 schools?
Yes, absolutely. Am I?
You are up next, yes.
The, not only would I like to see them expanded, but I think that one of the things that we should really be focusing on is using this crisis situation as an opportunity to make some significant changes in the way we approach all of these things. Because the budget is going to be the obstacle, but it's also going to be the key to fixing it. Right now, we have a budget and a formulaic calculation based on K through 12 education. We are a K through 12 education entity. But we, over the years, especially the last 15 to 20, we have added on tremendous numbers of community, what would more appropriately be called community services that are critical. And it makes sense to do them at school because that's where the children are. But these things that are coming out of the K through 12 budget are interfering with the K through 12 education mission and ineffectively approaching the issues that the kids have. I would like to see us separate those things out and for the community and the state to identify appropriately and fund appropriately and separately all of these things that do not fall into the K through 12 mission, but are mission-critical for students in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Brent, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. So our next question will be, what experience do you have in the field of education? For example, are you an educator? Do you currently have children in the schools? Have you served as a volunteer in the classroom? Do you have PTA leadership experience? Obviously, this was in your introductions, but please feel free to expand. And we are going to go in order based on the participants list, and Ms. Hotop is first. We seem to be having some technical difficulties there.
Somebody needs to unmute me.
There.
Okay, sorry. It wouldn't let me be unmuted, but thank you. So yes, I am an educator. I'm a professor. I teach, I teach in a classroom. I also train students, graduate students, one-on-one in what I consider more like an apprenticeship learning. And so, you know, that education has always been important to me. I mean, I, in the position I'm in, I don't teach as much as I would like. I wish I actually had a position where I was teaching undergraduates more. And that did, that's not how it worked out for me. But I love education, and it is incredibly important to me. Part of my background, I had didactic training in teaching as well as firsthand experience, mentored experience. In addition, I've been the room mom at my children's school. I've been a supportive parent. I do have a child with a five-by-four plan. I've been involved in those processes. And so I feel like I have a lot of the experiences, or all of the experiences needed to be an education expert. And so, you know, like, you know, I just, I can't say enough, like, how much, how important it is to me. Actually, I guess, well, the one thing, though, that I really, really feel very passionately about is things like middle school science fair, right? Like, that is something I'm incredibly passionate about. I've testified about we need more activities like that in our schools. It's not just about teaching in a classroom, but it's about those extracurricular activities that support what is happening in the classroom. And I feel like our kids are missing that frequently.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Watts, followed by Ms. Valencourt, Ms. Mallow, and Ms. Mosley.
So as you heard in my introduction, I actually made the shift from engineering into education. And when people say that they're educator, that, that kind of means a lot of different things. I actually left my job, went back to school, and got a master's in education. So I went through all the teacher training. I went through the new, new teacher prep, all that stuff. And I am certified currently, I heard, hold a certification from the state of Maryland in secondary math and physics. So I could still go into the classroom. And I will say that I've taught at HCC. I have taught on online platforms. And it's much different teaching at the collegiate level than it is teaching in the high schools or the middle schools even. That experience that you have, that I had at HCC, doesn't nearly reflect what I was doing in the classroom, the day in and day out. I mean, at HCC, the classroom, the, the changing times are like 15 minutes apart in middle school, it's five minutes. And just the feel of knowing what the teachers are going through that are teaching in high school and middle school and elementary is much different than college. And then also, I have a first grader in the public schools. I have a three-year-old who is coming up right behind him. I'm also on the Board of Trustees for the library system, whose mission is public education for all. So I, I really do believe in the transformative power of education, especially public education.
Thank you. Ms. Valencourt, you're up next.
Hi. You know, I'm frequently surprised to find out that a lot of people in the community don't realize that I'm not currently on the board because I was on the board from 2010 to 2018. And although it's, it's very important that there be a wide mix of, of skills and perspectives on the board, and having teachers is a great, people who are in public education in a classroom is a great thing to have. I, my, what I bring is about the experience in education is an extremely deep and broad knowledge base of special education law, the state, local, and federal education laws that apply to schools. The, the, you can't underestimate the impact that all of these kinds of regulations, guidelines, and laws have on how the school system is operating. And in order for the Board of Education to be effective in its mission to help make sure that the classrooms have everything they need and that the teachers are in a position to do the best job they can, the board members need to be responsive and listen to the teachers who are currently in the classrooms, understand what the laws are and that they need to be changed, be in a position to lobby effectively to do that. And those are the things that I bring from 20 years of experience. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Valencourt. And next up is Ms. Mallow.
Thank you. So I bring experience all the way from preschool through higher education. I've run a preschool. I've been a classroom volunteer, a PTA president, science fair coordinator, cultural arts coordinator. I have run a reading room at Swansfield Elementary. I have taught professionally at the National Crypto Logic School. I set up a project to do a guided reading books, guided level reading books closet, again, at Swansfield. And what that is, is that's what our educators, our classroom teachers use to teach your children how to read. So I worked with a Girl Scout who was working on her gold award to set up and organize that. And I've worked deeply in literature and literacy projects. I've worked on setting up a program at one of the schools on phonemes, blends, and digraphs. I have been the chair of the Community Advisory Council. I was vice chair for two years prior to my two years as chair. I took a science fair from 30 students participating to over 300. These are the kinds of hands-on, large-scale experiences that I have done. I've worked on multiple policy committees. I am currently the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Legal Services Director. So what that means is I bring a background that encompasses the entire gamut of education. And then I can apply the analytical skills and training that I bring from my first job. And I can bring the economics background of my education to bear too.
Hello. Way back when, when I finished college, my first introduction to being a teacher in the classroom was that I was a substitute teacher for high school mathematics. I substitute taught from basic math to through calculus, whatever they needed me in. I currently have four children in school. We have had experience with REC, elementary school, middle school, and high school. And I have taught as an adjunct at Baltimore County Community College. I had, used to own a yarn shop, and I taught classes there and managed the class curriculums. I have, was a first Lego League coach, and I coached a team at my home for several years. And we went to world championships. That was really exciting. We went all the way to West Virginia for world championships. But we made great friends with people from all over the world that the kids still communicate with. That was a really fun experience. I have, I have given presentations and done longitudinal studies on many different things, one of which was very interesting to me, was I presented to VA leadership on a longitudinal study that was about veterans' benefits and outcomes, if they're above or below the poverty line, with a focus on their utilization of education benefits provided through the VA system and how that looked. I am a volunteer in the classroom. Well, when we were in the classroom, I volunteer chaperoning. I really like to support music education through chaperoning. I think that's an area that needs a lot more volunteers. I volunteered for different roles on the PTA, maintaining websites and things like that. I am, was the first chair of the community CAC, and I am a representative on OBRC. And I've also been a representative on policy committees. So that, in a nutshell, is where I have spent some of my focus with being in the classroom and/or around education. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I would like to address how you think our schools can provide better support for students from the LGBTQ+ community. And I'm going to start with Cindy Valencourt.
Okay. The LGBTQ students are some of our most vulnerable students. When I, I grew up with a brother who was gay, and I watched him from the time we were, you know, he's older, he was older, so, you know, my entire life, and I watched him struggle just mightily in middle school and high school in particular, and, and then into his adult years. And what we need to do is to make sure that we are providing for all of our kids a safe and nurturing and inviting environment. One of my first years on the board, I brought back the information about the Trevor Project to the school system and distributed to teachers who were willing to display the Trevor Project sticker that was intended to let students know that this was an ally that they could comfortably speak with. The, there's, there isn't a substitute for that. The, there are a lot of students who are struggling with their, with, with where they want to tell their families. And they need people who are experienced to be able to be supportive and helpful to them. And so I believe that, to start with, we need to provide as a formal training program to all of our staff members who are eager. eager to provide that service for our students and make sure our students know who they are. And then branch out to make sure that all of our staff has a foundation.
Thank you. Jen Mallow, could you address the issue of LGBTQ support in the school system?
Absolutely. So first off, I am an ally. I am a true ally. I have members of my family who are part of the LGBTQ community. And I love them and I am proud of them. And the first thing we have to do is we have to affirm our students and our employees who are LGBTQ. It's not their preferred pronouns. It's their correct pronouns. We need to be asking what their correct pronouns are. We know that suicide rates escalate exponentially for transgender youth who are not affirmed in their gender identity. We need to ensure laws, the federal laws and rights that are afforded to our students are given to them. We need to normalize being LGBTQ. And that means saying, yes, we can talk about it. We can talk about it openly. It's not something to be hidden. It's not a lifestyle or a preference. It's who they are. And we need to say, every teacher needs to be able to say, I see you for who you are. And I believe in you and you can be a great student. And there needs to be anti-bias training, period. All of those things can and should be done to support our students and they should be able to use whatever bathroom they need.
Thank you. Jolene Mosley, would you like to address this question, please?
Thank you. Am I unmuted? Sorry. I think I keep like arguing with the moderator with the unmute. I think I hit unmute and then it says, no, you can unmute. And then it comes through. So I apologize for that. I agree with some things that I have heard so far about supporting our educators and our students that are LGBTQ. I think that we need to include curriculum in our curriculum. But in addition to including it, we need to also encourage it to be taught, right? Because we can include a lot of things as ideas and curriculum, but to maintain an encouragement of actually teaching these curriculums is very important. I think that we should continue to encourage GSAs or whatever the group wants to be called that meet at the schools. And if there are areas that they feel like they conversations that they're having that they want to share or don't want to share, that's that's how the group should work. But we should continue to listen and move forward and move forward and move forward because there's not like this end. Our world is changing all of the time and having these conversations of what is, what is what we need, what we need to be listening to and what we need to change in our world so that everyone is included and everyone has their voice been has their voices heard is extremely important. And I see that happening with conversations surrounding bathrooms and things like that, that we're trying to make decisions for people and we're not actually listening to what their needs are.
Thank you. And finally, Matthew Malia, would you like to address this issue?
Well, in the interest of time, let me first start out by saying yes to everything Ms. Mallow said. Start right there. Locally, we need to focus on the fact that leadership and environment starts at the top. So is vitally important that our Board of Education respects and affirms our LGBTQ community, all of it, the staff, the students, the related families. We can't have board members responding to questionnaires where they question whether students should be able to, whether it would be appropriate for students to share what their home structure is because they've got two fathers or two mothers. We can't have a issue of not letting teachers discuss or reveal their sexuality and who they are because we never question allowing a teacher to identify themselves as misses. These questions only get brought up against the LGBTQ community. And trust the people that are steeped in the issue. Trust your carry grading. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will turn it to you, Brett.
Thank you. And this may be the last round of questions, or there may be one more before we do wrap up. I would like to thank everyone and remind them we were having extra credit through the PTA Council where we posted all of our members' questions online if you wish to respond in less of a time sensitive atmosphere. But let's go to this final question, which is a variant of what I'd asked earlier. So listen carefully. What specific actions would you take as a member of the Board of Education to resolve current and anticipated long-term achievement gaps related to distance and virtual learning? And we will lead with Ms. Hotop. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
That's okay. It's Hotop, but they only have to spell my name on the write-in ballot. They don't have to pronounce it. So that's okay. But anyway, long-term gaps. You know, I think we're going to need tutoring for some kids, but some kids, their parents can help them. Some kids, some kids will be able to thrive in online learning. There's lots of parents who are reporting that online learning is actually better for their kids because they aren't being bullied or they're not feeling the pressures that they sometimes feel in person. Now, I think there's issues with social emotional well-being if you're only online. But, you know, I think we're going to need to have tutoring. The teachers, the teachers have been working so hard, so incredibly hard. And I think a lot of this is going to fall on the backs of teachers. It's going to fall on the backs of paraeducators to bring the students back up. Now, I'm not saying the teachers have to be the tutors, but I really, I really would love to see more programs that get parents involved in helping in these ways. I have just routinely found it difficult to just sometimes get into the school system to be able to do those things. And I think we need all hands on deck. We can, we just, we just need the whole community to be stepping up to help get children back up to speed who need to be brought back up to speed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up will be Ms. Mosley, followed by Ms. Lou, followed by Ms. Palmer, and finally, Ms. Small.
Okay. Some things that I noticed now that might be of importance to note when we're dealing with our current situation is sometimes we have students who are in you know, more of like a community setting. So it might just be household of kids or it might be households together of kids. And sometimes the kids educators can hear the other students talking while they're talking. And so maybe like headphones and microphone instead of utilizing just the Chromebooks. I would like to see looking at meal delivery for kids that are outside the walk zone of any school that are farm students. So that we can know, I mean, we've done a really good job of providing breakfast and lunch and many areas to pick it up and things like that. But there are some kids that just can't make it to the school. And listening to the educators to see what needs they see that need to be addressed. And one of the things that might work well is assigning like a checkup, an adult peer of some sort one-on-one with the child to see if there are areas that they're not, they're needing support and help for and that they can follow up on the work that perhaps maybe they got a little behind on during and need to keep going and feel included and get them to school. Wherever that is, in person or online.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Next up is Ms. Lou.
Thank you. If we're in this distant learning long term, and then we have to do early detection and early intervention to find out which students they suffer from this environment. Because actually I had a conversation with a parent. She told me that her kid cried in the morning. And her son felt really sad. So we want to reach out to those parents, provide them a communication channel, listen to them, identify the students. We don't want them to fall behind too much. We want to detect issues early and intervene early. Second, what are the effective ways? So again, small group in-person teaching. Second, individualized tutoring, especially for the student who don't have the resources. Because for my kids, actually, I can't teach them mathematics. My daughter already told me that, well, I forgot everything because she doesn't have math this semester. How can I provide tutoring to those students? So I know that Chinese-American parent association used to have those free tutoring to title one students. We need to work to provide free children, online children to those students again and see how can we help them. We don't want to wait. We want to act early because early intervention is so important. We need to seek community feedback. And I, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lou. And next up is Ms. Palmer.
Thank you. So I agree with many of the points that have been raised and some of Dr. Lou's comments as well. I think a couple of additional points to make. You know, distance learning has also had a major impact on the social and emotional well-being of many children. And so I think understanding and, you know, meeting children where they are in terms of focusing on their social and emotional well-being is going to be critical. But beyond that, in terms of how we address the deficiencies as a result of distance learning over the long term, I think we need to look at individual student skills. You know, we're continuing to do standardized tests. But I think what we need is to focus on identifying where students are, you know, when we get back into the classrooms and identifying individual skills and reteaching them the concepts that they may learned over the past year or the past six months. So really honing in, and again, that's similar to a couple of the other comments made about tutoring, but honing in to understand what students have lost and how we can reteach them those core concepts before moving on to continue, you know, without first ensuring that we've closed that gap. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. And next up is Ms. Delmonte Small.
I think the most important thing we need to do is we need to learn from this experience and we have to figure out what we do moving forward. For the students who are struggling right now, the supports that we're going to need are going to have to come from the school system as well, from the community. First of all, when we get to the summer, what we're going to have to, I think what we need to do as a school system is provide a more robust summer program and to provide additional seats for students so that they can get the assistance they need. We also have to look at one important group of our students, which are our students who have special needs. And under federal law are supposed to be receiving services that they currently are not receiving right now under a virtual environment. We have to figure out how we can do that because they are, they are not progressing and in many cases going backwards, which we definitely don't want to see to have, see happen to that population. The other thing we need to do is I think no matter where we go in the future, we're going to have to continue to have some sort of a virtual option. So that students who do flourish in a virtual option will be able to do so. And when students need to go on home and hospital, we will now have a much better home and hospital option for those students. It's very important for us to provide additional services. And I think talking to our parents and finding out how we can make that happen. And even now, while we're still in a virtual, clearly, I want to see us get our students back in the classroom safely so that we can do small group instruction, not a not help, but instruction where they're actually learning from a teacher as opposed to learning how to do instruction on a, on a laptop. We need to get our kids back in front of our educators who are the experts.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Delmonte Small. I'd like to ask our host, Ms. Williams, if she'd like to continue with a last high-speed question round or move to our conclusion roundup.
Oh, but we do a high-speed question round.
So that will be up to Joan. Passing it on to you.
Okay, for my high-speed question, it's two parts. So be as concise as you can. This is related to the, to the COVID-19 pandemic. What conditions are necessary for you to support opening schools for in-person instruction? First part of the question. Second part, are you prepared to extend the school year to provide additional learning opportunities? And the first hand that went up is Sezen Palmer, Ms. Palmer.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, so I am supportive of opening schools now for small class instruction. This is something that I think we should have already considered. There are many other school systems that have brought back various numbers of students. And I think, as I said, I would start with small classes. I would focus on those children who are most vulnerable and who need in-person instruction and would want to bring them back as quickly as possible in a safe way. So ensuring that we have small enough class sizes to keep social distance, et cetera. So so I would want to start small now and lay out a plan for how we have all of our children back in schools as the COVID numbers continue to decrease and as we have a vaccine in order to to move toward that. And in terms of extending the school year, I would certainly be supportive of it. Obviously, there are a lot of details that would need to be worked out in order to allow that. But between the the distance learning that we had since March and then the decision that was already made to be virtual through January this year, I think it's going to be hard to address what we did in the last question in terms of getting children back up to where they need to be without devoting additional time. Thank you.
Julie Hatta.
Yes. So I think in order to get our kids back in school, we need robust testing. We need robust contact tracing, meaning everybody's willing to participate in the contact tracing. And we need low levels of community transmission. And by community transmission, I mean not necessarily low levels in the community, but low levels in the community where you can't trace back where they got it from. And so I think those are the three keys. I think right now, we don't have all of those things. We really when cases rise, I think our testing capacity is is going to be far exceeded. We also need to address how we're going to deal with when people start getting vaccinated because it's not like everybody's going to walk up one day and be vaccinated. It's going to take time. There will be prioritization of who gets vaccinated and we need to figure out how that's going to be part. Do we wait till every kid has an opportunity to have a vaccine before kids can start going back? Or, you know, what is the strategy going to be? And it's going to take a lot of conversations to do that. So we need to start talking now. We need to stop waiting until the last minute to start talking because we can't figure out what the issues really are until we really are talking. And as for extending the school year, I think if we could find ways to extend the school year that work with the teachers and the teachers' union, which, you know, should have a way, a role in this. I think that would be great. One of the things I advocate for even outside of COVID is actually year-round schooling. That's not where kids get more school. It's just the school year is spread across the entire, like school is spread across the entire year. So there's not that break in the middle of the summer that leads to that knowledge gap, that knowledge loss.
Thank you. Jen Mallow, would you like to address this issue?
Thank you. So I'm going to list off the number of things that I think are required for us to reopen. We need adequate PPE. We need adequate masking and masking enforcement. And the educators need to be given the training for masking enforcement that isn't just policing and isn't just punitive. We need MRF-13 filters in every school. We need a decision tree that is concrete of when X happens, what is Y's response? So we need protocols for quarantining. We need to protocols for isolation. We need adequate staff willing to come back and to teach in person. Absent that, we're going to see an exodus of staff, of experienced staff, of staff that we need to hold on to. There is a national teacher shortage. If we compel teachers If we compel teachers to come back before they believe it is safe, we will lose our staff. We are working on bringing back small groups. So saying that we're waiting and waiting and waiting is a misnomer. It is completely untrue. We are working on it and we are making sure that we have adequate and appropriate protocols for hand washing, high-touch surfaces, those kind of things. Because the model that was used in the daycares is very different than what we're going to see with a class of 10, 15, 20, 25 kids. So all of that needs to be done and it needs to be done in consultation with the local health department. It needs to be done in consultation with epidemiologists, with data scientists. And those are what will happen.
Thank you. Cindy Valencourt.
Hi. I would take a different approach. The metrics that I think that the question implied, you know, as in less than 5% positive rates or something like that, that, that's all great and fine. And that's, that's as far as I'm concerned, up to the, the professional scientists at the health department and epidemiologists. But ultimately, what we have to have our parent, we have to have a flexibility for the teachers and the parents to be able to decide whether they feel comfortable or not sending their students back safely. And we, it's going to take an enormous investment because it's not a simple question of, well, this teacher can run a class that is part virtual and part in-person with only 10 kids in the class because that just, we, they've been working on it and it just isn't going to work. So whether it's an extended school year or small classes and maintaining virtual, it's going to take an investment. We may be saving some money in some ways because of the buildings being closed, but ultimately, this is going to be an extremely expensive pandemic for everybody in many ways. And the, an ultimate, and the bottom line is that until individuals feel safe, we should not be trying to compel them to put themselves in an unsafe situation. And that, that's my opinion on that.
Thank you. And finally, Matthew Malleyette.
As a final answer, I guess this is a good time to build on what has been said before. Thank you to Ms. Mallow for having that very robust list of things that we need to accomplish. I'd like to especially highlight her mention of the ventilation improvement. Our indoor air quality, even before COVID, it was a liability and it will stand in the way of being able to manage in-person schooling as long as the pandemic continues. To what Ms. Hotop said about the vaccine distribution, once we get to that point, I would be very much in favor of the school system partnering with the health department and health agencies to lend our infrastructure to helping accommodate, accomplishing that significant vaccination effort. And regarding extending the school year, absolutely. Ms. Valencourt earlier has already mentioned the importance of using this experience to find where we can improve things based on this opportunity and mitigating the summer slide has been something that the school has needed to really address directly. And this gives us a perfect excuse to get into that role soon. And yes, I think we should better manage our, the lengths of our vacations.
Thank you. Thank you. And I am now going to turn it back over to Cynthia Williams.
Okay, and I'm going to do closing responses. As we said, we're going to do this in reverse now. So the first person who gets to do a closing statement for two minutes is Cindy Valencourt.
Well, thank you again for putting this together because this unusual campaign season has been very difficult to be able to communicate with people. I just want to make sure that I get this in, that anybody who wants to go in more depth or discuss any of the other questions that they have can contact me either by email or through social media, my website, cindyvalencourt.com. You can call me, the, my contact information is on the website. The, the most important thing for me is that when I used to go to simulated congressional hearings and the kids would, you would, we would be told to, tell the kids what you do. And I would tell them I'm on the Board of Education and my job is to make sure that your teachers have everything they need to be able to give you the best education that they can. And I think that we have been failing to do that for quite a long time. We are, the school system is tasked with doing too much with too little and our teachers are being tasked with doing too much in too short a period of time. One of the things I didn't fit in, in my COVID response was that the biggest thing that we're going to have to do in order to make sure our kids get caught up is give the teachers and the professional educators the opportunity and the time to speak and evaluate each individual child to see exactly where they are. This school system and public education in general has to stop looking for shortcuts for everything. This is not an assembly-line process that will ever work. We have to get to each individual.
Yeah, that's my material.
Give them what they need and let the profession.
No, she just, she dropped them off.
Do their, exercise their profession. Thank you. It was two minutes, right? You were good.
Okay, I apologize. I didn't realize I was not on mute. Next person is Yun Lu.
Hi. Thank you, the League of Women Voters of Howard County, the Association of Community Services of Howard County, the PTA Council of Howard County, and the Horizon Foundation for organizing this forum. And thank you, everyone, for listening to us. I'm Dr. Yun Lu, running for Board of Education in District Five. Seeking election is about preparing children for their bright future, improving their academic achievement, physical well-being, as well as social emotional readiness. As a statistician working for a federal public health agency, I have the experience and the skill set to bring evidence-based decision-making to the BOE. I can provide perspectives as a mother, as a statistician, an educator, and a community volunteer. I want to make sure that the school system spends taxpayers' money wisely to improve education. Serving on the BOE requires collaboration and I constantly promote collaboration and build mutual respect when there is a difference, a value diversity. By consciously seeking to understand, only through mutual respect, people can truly appreciate diversity, work together collaboratively and in synergy. And most importantly, I care deeply about our children, our community, and education. District Five voters, I'm asking for your vote. Please vote for Dr. Yun Lu. You can check out my website, luforboe. Thank you.
Okay, now we go to District Four. And we start with Sezen Palmer this time.
All right, thank you very much and thank you again for hosting this great forum and for everybody who has joined in. I'm here because educational outcomes have been suffering year after year in HCPSS and we need changes now. We need to identify the most urgent and important topics to focus on and align our resources with them. We talked about getting children back to school safely. Some of the other things that I would want to focus on are providing teachers with the tools they need to educate our children. So that includes funding for our special educators, focusing on the closing achievement gaps in math and reading, and aligning resources to strategies that are actually successful. Some of the approaches that have been taken to date do nothing to address these gaps. There was a redistricting plan that purported to address achievement gaps. There are new administrative positions being added while we continue cutting funding for educators. We recently heard that over 3,000 students have unenrolled from HCPSS, which will translate to tens of millions of dollars taken away from the public school system. We need leaders with experience in how to effectively manage large billion-dollar organizations, not just continue cutting educators and cutting critical programs for our students. I'm the only candidate in District Four with that experience in running large organizations and making those kinds of strategic budgetary decisions. My opponent has had the opportunity to improve outcomes for students in HCPSS and during that time, class sizes have increased. We've cut parrot educators despite unacceptable levels of proficiency in math and reading and our most vulnerable students have been disproportionately impacted as a result. We need change. I have experience in building and rebuilding organizations and I look forward to bringing that experience to the Howard County Public School System. And so District Four voters, I ask for your vote and you can send me any questions that you may have beyond this at sezen@sezenforboe.org. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Our next person with closing is Jen Mallow.
Thank you for having us and for hosting this forum. We just need to look at the saying that all politics is local and we know that this is a political race. And when we compare it to the national race, we see the discounting of experience and the discounting of science. During this pandemic, we need leaders in, that have experience with HCPSS, with background in education. We need experience in making tough decisions based on science and data with an eye towards social justice. We need someone with a background and backbone to do that. We need someone who can partner with local leaders to get the job done for all children. My endorsements by Liz Bobo, our only female county executive, former county councilman, C. Vernon Gray, former delegate Frank Turner, the current elected team for District 12 at the State House level have all endorsed me. And you may say, why? Why have they endorsed you? Because they believe that I have the skills and the ability to work with our elected leaders, to fully fund our schools, to advocate for all children. I'm Jen Mallow. I have the experience necessary, the background, the backbone, and I am able and willing to continue doing this job and will do it well. So I thank you for your support and I ask for your vote, District Four voters. And remember, my name's Jen Mallow. You can go to votjenmallow.com with any questions, concerns. And everyone, please make sure you go out and vote. It is all new voting centers. There are five early voting centers and 17 Election Day voting centers. You can vote at any of them, whether it's at Wild Lake High School, Reservoir High School, Longreach, Meadow Brook, or Marriott's Ridge. You can go and cast your vote from October 28th to November 2nd. Make sure you go all the way down to the bottom of your ballot and vote in every race because every race is critical and it's critical that we have people on the Board of Education that share your values. Thank you.
And I just want to note it's October 26th, not 28th.
Okay, so next is Julie Hotop.
So again, I'd just like to thank you for inviting us here today. It's, it's great to be able to have this opportunity and I also really appreciate you extending this to the declared write-in candidates because you didn't have to. And I really appreciate being given this opportunity. Just to remind people, if you're, if you like what I say, you have to write in my name. And so it's H-O-T-O-P. And like the other candidates that spoke before me, I am happy to talk more by email, on face, on social media, like Facebook or Twitter. And it's pretty easy to find me there because I have a pretty unique last name. It's, it's not found much in this county. I just, I'm going to take, I want to, I want to just mention a few things my, the others in District Four have said and correct one, which is, you know, Ms. Palmer says she's the only person who has that experience with really large funding portfolios. I have a multimillion-dollar grant portfolio as part of my work and it funds my students, my postdocs, my employees. It infunds people in other groups at other universities as well. And so I also have that experience. It didn't come up in the questions, but I do have it. And I agree with Ms. Mallow. I think we need right now people who have a background in science and education and that is me. Like, that is what I have dedicated my life to with my profession. And so I hope people will consider voting for me. Two of the issues that I didn't get my hand up fast enough that are really important to me, mental health. I just want to give a shout out to Grassroots and their crisis intervention line. If you ever need it, it's there for you. Find the number now before you need it and know that it's there and know how to call them. And as for LGBTQIA+ families, you know, that's, that includes my family. My kids have two grandmothers. And, you know, I think we need to have more support for not just the kids who are LGBTQIA+ but also the kids whose parents or grandparents or, or, or whoever cares for them are also part of that community and normalizing those, those, those relationships as part of our curriculum. And so I just like to thank everyone.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we move on to District Three and that would be Jolene Mosley.
Hi, I'm Jolene again. Thank you so much for having this forum. I really appreciate this conversation. And I would ask voters for your consideration in voting for me. As you know, Tom supports me and, but his name is still going to be on the ballot, so you need to go down and vote for Jolene Mosley. My website is jolene mosley dot com and you can request a yard sign to display proudly and grow this campaign a little organically. One thing I did want to clarify a little bit, Sezen Palmer mentioned in her closing that the school system is down 3,000 students due to COVID-related kids coming out. The official numbers aren't out yet and she also mentioned that the funding will be exacerbately lower because of that. I want to make sure that people understand that it's a lag. We use the data now for enrollment for funding that is the year after what we're, you know, so we're already doing budgets for this coming next school year. So it'll be a lag for the next one out. And there is time within that time span to talk about changing the formulas due to COVID and things like that. So just because we have lower enrollment now does not, due to this pandemic, does not necessarily mean straight up that we're going to have lower funding years from now. We can have that conversation. And working collaborative with people that are in these decision-making areas is what the Board of Ed is going to have to do. And that is something that I am looking forward to working on. So again, thank you so much. I look forward to working with the community and with HCPSS to move us to a space where everyone is valid, included, and accepted. And I really appreciate this conversation and you can reach out to me at any time. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we go to District Two, Antonia Watts.
I just want to kind of reiterate what everyone else has kind of said. So thank you so much for hosting this organization, this forum. It's been a bit of a challenge to get in front of voters in the way in which I would love to. That the door knocking, the just talking one-on-one with people is something that I actually really enjoy. And so to kind of continue those conversations that I haven't been able to have with voters, if you go to my website, at the very bottom, you can click on Contact Me or have a chat with me. And you can have, we can have like a one-on-one Zoom conversation. So I'm trying to use the technology that we have today to, to help further the conversations that we would, them otherwise missing out on. And I've really enjoyed those and they, they're open to anybody. I've talked to students, I've talked to people that are in District Two that are outside of my district. So they're really just open for everybody because I really value the community conversations. My opponent has suspended his campaign, but he, I'm in a similar situation as Jolene. He will still appear on the ballot, so it's very important that you still exercise your ability to vote. I hope I clearly communicated that I am uniquely qualified for this position and that I am committed to public education and to public service. Just as a reminder, Ms. Mallow said this, and voting is super important. Mail-in ballots are already arriving. I check my mailbox all the time now. Early voting starts on the 26th. Election Day is the, is the second, November 2nd. So please have your voting plan in place, know how you're going to vote. There's still time to register to vote, to get your absentee ballot if you want to vote that way. And I ask when you get your ballot, if you please vote for Antonia Barkley-Watts for Board of Education.
Bye.
Okay, thank you very much. We go to District One and Matthew, Matthew Malleyette gets to go first this time.
Thank you. And Ms. Mosley, thank you for highlighting just how critical it is going to be that this board be able to work with our other elected bodies and our state delegation. I'm proud to be supported by many of the Howard County State delegation and plan on using that connection to advocate for the school system. and plan on using that connection to advocate for the school system. And for the, for 100 years, the League of Women Voters has sought to get out the vote and enhance our great democracy. Thank you for continuing that legacy today with our upcoming election. Uh, thank you to our supporting hosts as well, PTEC, ACS, and the Horizon Foundation. I open by telling you I care. I care about finding solutions. I care about being a part of a team. My votes, my motions, and my participation will all be aligned to advance the concerns I care about. I care about your students. I care about your communities, and I care about the educators that support them both. In three years, when you ask me what my board has accomplished, I will probably point you to every decision we have made, because I will have been a part, an active part of that team. You can count on me to care about our school. Early voting begins in less than one month. Be sure to go and vote and go all the way to the bottom of your ballot. I am Matthew Malyette, and to the District One voters, I'm asking for your support and your vote. Thank you very much, and thank you for turning in.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, next and last is Christina Delmonte Small.
Well, thank you to our hosts for holding this forum. And I'm Christina Delmonte Small, and I'm running for reelection in District One. I moved here 15 years ago, same reason like a lot of us live here, is because of the schools. And I'm a parent of both a current HCPSS student as well as a recent graduate. Right now, especially with the pandemic, we need to make sure that the Board of Education runs in a transparent method and that we have meaningful discussions in public so that our schools, our, our schoolchildren, our educators, and our parents have an understanding of what our decisions are and what that's going to mean on the ground in our schools. Unfortunately, the current board isn't doing that. I asked for us to have a standing agenda item on an update as to what we're going to be doing for face-to-face learning and what we're going to be doing moving forward. And unfortunately, the board as a whole decided that that wasn't important. I also am very concerned about the business side of the organization. We are a billion-dollar organization. I have experience both in the private sector and as a congressional investigator, where I investigated waste, fraud, and abuse. I want to make sure that we have a firm side of the business that we can bill, utilize as a foundation and build upon that in order to educate our students. So thank you again for having this. I am, again, running in District One. I'm asking that you vote for me so that I continue to work with you, the community, and our parents and our educators to make Howard County a school system where each and every child can have their needs met and that they can do the best that they possibly can. So please reach out to me if you have additional questions, you want to talk about your concerns. You can find me on Facebook or email me at christinaforboe@gmail.com, and also my website, which is christinaforboe.org. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, all of you, for coming and participating today. Thank you to our moderators, Brent and Joan. We appreciate your, your great work here today. Thank you. My apologies for any technical quirks. It's a brand-new world, and I'm still learning how to use it. Uh, we want to thank everyone again for being here, including the listeners. And to let you know that this can be reseen on our website, which is hokoh.lwvhowardmd.org. And also, uh, look for our voter guide that has just been put up there. And our, and also go to vote411 for more information on, on the elections. So good luck to all the candidates in your runs, and thank you again for, everybody for coming. Take care.